As the record show, we've now reconvened on February 17th meeting. We will proceed to the addendum agenda. All supervisors are present. We now move to item three on the addendum agenda. Unfinished business, Pima County nicotine tobacco-free healthy workplace initiative. What's the pleasure of the board?
Do you have a presentation from the board?
Mr. Huckleberry or Dr. Garcia?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Really, three and four are kind of intertwined and co-bangled. One is the issue of tobacco and tobacco policy. The second really relates to the health insurance rates for fiscal year 15, '16. And you've received a number of communications from me, so I won't belabor the point. In the issue with regard to the hiring of those who use tobacco, the recommendation has been to enact a policy that would prohibit after July 1st our hiring of those individuals. It accompanies with it a number of amendments to the personal policies and merit system that would effectuate such. So if the board decides to reject that particular option, then those actions or those policies or those merit system rules would not be necessary. The second item deals with how we set our rates for self-insurance trust fund and what plans we offer for fiscal year 15, '16. And in material I've sent to you, and I've included a table that talks about the rates and where our employees are, we have really two plans that are offered, a high deductible plan and a PPO plan. The more costly of the two is based on actuarial experience is the PPO plan. What you see in the rates that were proposed and the significant increase in the PPO, which I think is part of the concern, is actually rating those two plans independently, standing on their own with regard to their membership and their medical experience with regard to healthcare cost. So if you were to continue to retain, and we have today about an 88% to 12% ratio of payment by the county, or taxpayer, versus the payment by the employee, and that's the 12%. If we were to try and retain that ratio in rating those two plans, that's why you see a very significant increase in the PPO plan. We've also suggested that it would be most appropriate to try and transition employees as quickly as possible if they choose this coming year, 15, '16, from the PPO plan to the high deductible plan. One of the incentives the county has with regard to that transition is we've always made a contribution to the employee for a health savings account. If it's the employee, only it's $1,000 a year. It is prorated on the basis of pay period. And if you're employee and spouse, or employee and family, or employee and children, it's a $2,000 contribution to the high deductible plan. Part of the concern, I think, has always been in some of the, a third of the workforce that retains or remains in the PPO plan is the issue of out-of-pocket costs associated with the high deductible plan. And what we've done, and I've provided a couple of, two additional tables to the board, two attachments really. One was really trying to determine whether that's accurate or whether it's a myth that, you know, you can be subject to much more out-of-pocket costs with the high deductible plan versus PPO plan. And the answer is if you're a user that uses little medical services during the year, you're much better off in the HDHP plan. You actually make money given our contribution. If you're a high user, meaning you have 18 or more visits to the physician, specialty visits, emergency room visits, and hospitalizations, we've indicated that's still positive for, as far as out-of-pocket costs to be in the HDHP plan, the high deductible plan versus the PPO plan. To then carry that step further, our administrator, who's our Etna, we've asked them to select, you know, at random, and they did, a number of actual experiences over the past year with regard to employee only, employee spouse, employee and children. In every case, in every case evaluated in that 16 sample, and obviously we can expand the sample, we found in almost, in every case in that sample, the employee, if that employee who was in the PPO plan had been in the high deductible plan, they would have less cost incurred. So what you have is those two options. I've also, in a memorandum that I've sent to you last week, just trying to summarize where we were, because it's a complicated area, that if the board wanted to lessen the impact on the PPO, you could just, you know, pretty much arbitrarily select some numbers of that one there. We know that our experience over from last year's expenses to this year's expenses is an increase of about 7%, 6.9. And that assumes we still pay back some of the general fund loan to the health insurance trust fund that really gave us the, let's say, the financial cushion to go into a self-insurance plan. If, you know, that stays in place and you begin lowering the amount of premiums into the PPO plan, all that means is that the county will end up picking up that additional That option is obviously on the table for the board to consider with regard to what the amount of the plan cost is for the PPO. The plan cost for the HDHP plan is pretty nominal, pretty minor. If you look at the $23 that's looked at for next year, you've got to remember that's before we give healthy insurance discounts. If an employee qualifies for all four, their premium, if it's employee only, you know, drops by $20, so it's $3, so it's effectively zero contribution by the employee. We also, and I indicated to you, that there's a second discussion that talks what we said in the previous material. If you choose not to look at banning future employees who smoke, we ought to begin considering an employee surcharge for those who do smoke. And the fact that we have 30% of employees who do smoke, 70% who don't smoke. If you look at the plans, again, if they're the aggregate experience and medical experience, what you have is 70% of the employees subsidizing 30% with regard to medical experience and medical cost. And that's just a normal statistic that bears out, no matter if you look at our plan, you look at national statistics, you look at Nstatistic. And what has been suggested is that we're allowed by the Affordable Care Act to charge a 50% surcharge of the actual total cost of the monthly or bi-weekly premium. If you were to do that, and if we looked at 30%, we'd be looking at roughly about $60 a month. What I recommend is cut that in half to 30, and an increase at $10 throughout the next three months. It is important to understand that based on the Affordable Care Act, that any employee who enrolls in and successfully completes, or is complete, a smoking secession plan will not be subject to those surcharges. And so the 1,654 employees who have health insurance, if they chose to enroll in one of those plans and they completed, they will not be charged with surcharge. It does not mean they quit smoking. It means they complete the secession plan. And that's a step in the right direction. What it says, if we could get all 1,600 of those employees into a smoking secession plan for four weeks, or eight weeks, or 12 weeks, there are different plans, different options employees can choose, from telephone to sessions to a number of varieties, it's up to them. But if we just had 10% of our employee base who successfully completed the secession plan, actually stopped smoking, we'd be much better off, they'd be much healthier, and we would have taken a step in our direction. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have, and...
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, I have several questions. Do we have any projected increases for non-smokers, or are they going to stay stable for the next five years? Is that the, or is that a real issue, that those non-smoker base rates could increase, which would impact the smokers even further?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, our experience is on an annual actuarial basis in other ways. We look at what happened last year and accept the rates projecting into the future. And so even these projections that we're looking at could be off. I mean, they're just based on your best estimate of past experience. All we know is that previously, when we were in a medically insured plan with an insurance carrier, our rate increases were averaging relatively between 10 and 16% per year, just based on what we actually experienced, because now we actually are able to see the information. It's about a 6.9% increase, and our goal is obviously to get that as stable as possible and keep it as low as possible for the longest period of time. If you look at what I've said looking forward, again, looking forward into '16, '17, what I said is we'd like to be out of the PPO plan by then, and we would like to offer a second high deductible plan, give employees more assurances that they aren't going to be hit early on with the high deductible cost. And at the same time, I'd like to increase for the benefit of the non-smoking employees what we call the tobacco-free discount. Right now, it's set at $5. I'd like to increase that at $16, '17 to $20. And so that really begins to be a positive incentive for the non-smoker to stay a non-smoker.
Okay. How do we handle families? For example, the employee is a non-smoker, but they have four dependents who all smoke in the family?
Madam Chair...
Or vice versa?
Yeah, I don't think we can handle that. I mean, we don't ask the employee, you know, the dependents. We could. Again, none of this is what we call based on testing or the like. The only test that ever was discussed was one that if the board chose to have hiring non-smokers, we would make the applicant, you know, look at testing then, but only then. And I think in most cases, it's just a checkbox that people put on an employment application.
Okay. And then another concern for me was the cessation program. I just want to be real clear that it is the Affordable Care Act that, you know, brought about these ability to charge additional costs for healthcare. And the cessation program, you talked about different types of classes you get, you know, maybe if you have four alternatives. Who pays for those classes, the materials, the instructions, the classrooms? And then do the employees take these classes on work time, or do they do it on their own time?
Yes. Let me try and, there are a number of questions. I think the issue with regard to the surcharge, the Affordable Care Act makes it possible, but there was nothing before the Affordable Care Act that would precluded an employer from doing that. And many hospital organizations were already doing it even before the Affordable Care Act. With regard to secession programs, I'll let some of the experts in the back talk about those, but the numbers of them may vary and extend. And I think we always pay for it, or the, and so I'll let either Alan or Gail expound on it. Whoever wants to talk about the number of secession programs we have.
I'll start off. I think we're actually up to a dozen different programs. We just started a new one, or expanded one with Etna that's, and as Mr. Huckleberry mentioned, we do pay for all those programs, the ones that are cost. There's a lot of programs in the community that are free, that we piggyback on. The sessions are anywhere from four to 10 sessions, in person, over the phone. Some of the sessions provide all of the nicotine replacement therapies, which are now covered under our insurance as of this year. And that, again, was part of the Affordable Care Act, made those covered. The programs, again, they're community-based, they are on their own time, they're not during work. They do actually go on their own time to go to these classes. Of course, some of them can be done on the phone over lunch, if you take the phone intervention. But yeah, we basically pay for those programs.
Okay. And do we contract with an outside agency to do those, or...
The ones through Etna is part of our program. We contract with them as our third-party administrator to provide that program. We've had discussions with the University of Arizona to contract with their program as soon as, well, they're going to be banner pretty soon, so when banner comes out, we'll finish those talks and get that fermed up. For the outside agencies that provide community programs, we just refer people to us.
Okay. And then, I don't know who's going to take this question. We talked about this the other day, Alan, was the alternate solutions for determining people who smoke, because that's what I have a real issue with, is a supervisor being able to just pick someone out and say, you know, "I think you've been smoking," or witnesses "I'm smoking," whatever. I just think it opens the door for potential issues if we have individuals handpicking versus some other methodology for determining who gets tested and who doesn't.
So the last thing we want to do is start a testing force, or as I call it, the smoking police? It'll be pretty much on the honesty system, where people, when they sign up for their benefits, will declare whether or not they're a smoker. There was provisions in the policies that said that the only time we would actually do a physical test is if there was sufficient evidence to that effect. The difficulty that for HR is that we're going to have to make sure that sufficient evidence, is sufficient evidence. And it's not one employee, man, and another employee, or supervisor trying to pick on an employee. And that will be our job to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. I see that one as a real issue. And I see it opening the door for a lot of potential problems. That's one that I've thought about extensively, and I think we discussed it the other day, is what is the right solution? I'd like to see something that's more randomized versus picking people out of the, you know, deciding who gets tested just based upon someone's, you know, and I do understand you're going to monitor that, but I still think it leaves the door open for some potential abuse. And then we have, Mr. Huckleberry answered those questions. And then regarding the letter from Ms. Castillo, she talked about the fact that she would like to see the union included in these discussions. And is there a committee that we typically meet with to discuss potential changes in the healthcare policy, or is that not the typical path we follow?
The county has what we call the HIBWAC, which is the funny name. It's the Health Insurance Benefit Loans Advisory Committee. And in this particular instance, they were provided with the recommendations, and their input was then brought back and distributed, but they were not asked for a recommendation or any type of formal action on the recommendations.
Okay. So they were allowed to participate, or you just submitted to them and they...
No, we just submitted the recommendations that we come up with. Actually, we submitted them twice. We submitted the very first version, which, based on their comments, we revised significantly. And then we provided the second, second semi-final version to them at a meeting and took all their comments back.
Okay. So that's where those revisions came from, were the result of feedback from that group? Okay. And then the other thing is the, she discussed the fact that she wanted the split of the pool to stay, and I think you probably got that feedback. I just want to ensure that. And then she, again, and I don't know if this is the typical process, I'm asking you the question. She requested more time and direction to meet and confer, go to the meet and confer process. And is that something that would be able to be accommodated?
When do we start enrollment? Typically, we do enrollment in April or May. I mean, we're, April. So we're mid-February, toward the end of February now?
Yes. And we're supposed to start open enrollment. I think the actual enrollment will be toward the end of April. And then we have about 10 weekly time to get ADP to program the new rates and all the changes into the system.
So we're looking at, you need a decision from us in terms, from this board, in terms of the recommended action as it relates to healthcare. You would need that by beginning of April?
No, actually, to get it programmed, we'd have to have that decision hopefully no later than today. No, today.
Well, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, no.
Okay, you have to program, you're starting at the, toward the end of April, and you back it up eight weeks. Is that what you're saying?
Eight to 10 weeks. So it would be, the first meeting in March would be the latest, we could get it in time without getting, in order to get it up and running, we're open enrollment.
Okay. And then I just want to clarify that the final premiums, I went ahead and calculated the first year based off the rates that you put in. And then the final premium would include a $720 at the end of the five years or four years, correct? Is that right? So it's 26 weeks and $10 each year. So that would be $260 increase in your premium every year with the...
You're talking about smoking?
The surcharge, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Then, Chairman Miller, the board, really, three decisions, or four decisions. One, hiring or not hiring smokers. Two, rates for the HDHP plan, which we're recommending, and they're pretty minor, and that covers about 1,700, no, excuse me, about 3,400 of our employees who are enrolled. And the next decision is the rates for the PPO plan, and that covers about 1,700 of the employees who are enrolled.
And on that, you're recommending for the PPO, what your recommendation is based on your February 10th memo. You're looking at an increase of approximately $64 for employee only, 135 employee plus spouse, 135 employee plus children, 131 employees plus children, and then employee plus family. It would be, this is bi-weekly, it would be 191, 63. And that's your recommendation to encourage employees to move from the PPO to the HDHP?
Yes. It is based on the rates that would be necessary in order to evaluate the plan, health expense experience for that group in the PPO plan, and retain this 88, 12% ratio of who pays what. And in my memorandum that I sent to you, I believe like last Friday, I said there's another alternative, and again, we're looking at this significant increase, and I think we understand it. So if the board were chove to say, "We want to lessen that impact," then I then suggested rates, just round numbers, $60, and it's between the 45 people paying now and the 108 I recommended, and then just kind of down the line, it's all proportional to the exact same proportions that were in any others, because of just example, how much expense they're raising them all proportionally about the same. That's that second group for the PPO plan, which is 60, 138, 135, and 197.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Well, I think Supervisor Miller does, and I asked him, then Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Huckleberry, I asked, when you and I had discussions about, I'm going to separate the issues, I'm going to go with the PPO, HDHP first. When we had talked initially about the idea of that separation and that increase, I asked you very explicitly, from an employee standpoint, best and worst-case scenario, would an employee see benefit, or would it be more costly to an employee to actually participate in the HDHP if they had participated in the PPO before? And the answer to that was what?
The answer was that in all cases, if we look at it, it would be better financially for the employee to participate in the HDHP plan as opposed to the PPO plan.
Better both for the county and the employee?
We looked at it based on just simply the savings to the employee. The county would still retain this really rough 88, 12%.
And my question, Mr. Huckleberry, had been from the employee's standpoint, not from the employer's standpoint. At this point, can, Madam Chair, Mr. Huckleberry and Mr. Bolzomi, can we see or ascertain a situation where an employee would see a greater cost for their healthcare in the ADHP than the PPO?
If they participate and they get the HSA, no, we could not find one. What we did is we had Etna provide us numbers so that we weren't picking the numbers. We told them to provide us random, actual, real people in our system that were on the PPO plan, at all levels, at the employee only, the employee plus spouse, employee plus child, employee plus family, and at all levels of spending, where they were either high utilizers of the plan or low utilizers. Based on their numbers coming back, we couldn't find any in the 16 examples where they were better off staying on the PPO. Now, that being said, every single individual on our plans is different. Every single individual has their own different situations with their healthcare. But we did ask them to pick anywhere from very high utilization people to someone that never goes to the doctor.
So you basically did a bell curve?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, obviously, particularly in the first year, when you go through and you go from PPO to ADHP, the big problem is on July 1, your HSA's at zero.
That's correct.
Which has a real simple effect, that being that for those who switch from the PPO to the ADHP, that we do $500 upfront. And then obviously, if you're single, six months before you actually get the county match, if you're a child or spouse or family, then it's only, what is it, three months? So there's money on day one, and you're not stuck if you have a HSA account. Mr. Huckleberry, is that something that's doable?
Madam Chair and Supervisor, well, it is yes. And what you could do is just, if you just give us some numbers, we can make sure that we always get above that, because again, you know, what happens is you take, for the family, you take $2,000 divided by 26, you get an odd number. And so, you know, what we're doing is you're advancing the county's contribution to the HSA on day one rather than per paper, you know. And just give us, will you say $500? If we make it even pay period, is it turns out to be $527? It's fine, because then we don't have to program the computer to run the odd unit either.
God forbid we had to program another computer. Let me switch for a moment to the tobacco issue. Mr. Huckleberry, what's been our experience in terms of the highest utilization of our healthcare in terms of our employee base?
Madam Chair and Supervisor, well, it is basically, you know, it's tobacco users. And it's typically emphysema and other diseases that are all somewhat closely related to tobacco use.
Do you have any numbers that you can show us?
The numbers, I think, that our health director came up with, and what we were looking at is about 13.4 million per year.
Madam Chair and Supervisor, well, it has done a variety of different scenarios, and the cost of tobacco-related morbidity and mortality to the county, specifically with regards to the healthcare utilization, is upward of as much as $10 million. You know, it will vary, and it will depend on the other comorbidities that a particular employee... that a particular employer... I'm sorry, a particularly... A particular employee has. One of the things that this estimate does not take into account specifically that is of note is the impact of secondhand smoke. We know that secondhand smoke has a particularly hard impact on children and even on adults in terms of rates of respiratory disease, SIDS, and actually, more information about other chronic diseases is developing. So, we've been conservative from that perspective.
Madam Chair, Dr. Garcia, what about, at this point, of the top utilizers of our healthcare? How many of those are, have smoking-related ailments at this point?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Valdez, that's a tough... That's a tough response to give you with a degree of precision because privacy considerations preclude us actually knowing which of our insured lives actually smoke. So, what the insurance industry does, what the medical industry does, is it identifies certain conditions that are highly likely to be associated with tobacco use. So, half of the 18 claims that were in excess of 125,000 during the last fiscal year were in folks who had diseases that were directly attributable or directly exacerbated by tobacco use. This represents at least about $2 million worth of medical claims plus an additional almost $700,000 worth of pharmaceutical benefit that goes along with those claims. So, you know, it's an imprecise science because of privacy issues, but the impact from a dollars and cents perspective is very real.
Madam Chair, and I don't know if it's Mr. Huckleberry or Dr. Garcia, at this point, we're obviously not the first ones to actually be considering a tobacco surcharge. Has there been success where it has been applied before?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Valdez, I can tell you that currently in the state of Arizona, there are eight smoke-free... Eight employers with smoke-free hiring policies. All of them in this space, in this state, happen to be in the area of healthcare. The most relevant example to our community is Tucson Medical Center, which has implemented that now for, I believe, four, five years, and have had no problems in terms of the recruitment and retention of their employees.
And what about a surcharge? Is there a surcharge in those... Well, obviously, there wouldn't be unless there exist employees.
Most tobacco... I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Supervisor Valdez, most employers that have some sort of smoking program in place have implemented some degree of surcharge. And I can tell you that that list is much larger for the entire state of Arizona than the list of a smoke-free hiring environment.
All right, and Madam Chair, Mr. Huckleberry, just for the clarification purposes, I have a memo here in front of me. What you're suggesting in terms of a tobacco surcharge is for the fiscal year '15, '16, a 30% increase and subsequent 10% increases in the subsequent two fiscal years? Okay. My bad.
Alan. You said that you're not going to enforce this. That it's mostly going to be on the honesty system. So, why are we putting rules in place that we're not going to enforce? Please explain. Because that's what you said.
Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Valdez, no, I didn't exactly say I wasn't going to enforce it. I said I wasn't going to start a police force. We are going to enforce the policy the way it reads, but we are going to make sure that when we do enforce it, that we're enforcing it with sufficient evidence.
So, are we going to train all our supervisors in snooping into people smoking? Because that's what we have to do with the police when it comes to Ted 70, and we're using the exact same measure of just reasonable suspicion.
We will...
So, please explain to me how we're going to train everybody.
Well, we currently do triennial mandatory training for all supervisory personnel, and we will probably, we will have to add a module to that training.
Add a module to that training? And so that they can go around smelling people? Or looking at pictures of them maybe that somebody sends in of them smoking? Or something along those lines? I'm asking you.
No, we haven't developed yet, so I can't tell you.
So, you're asking us to approve something that we don't even know what we're approving?
No, sir.
That's what it sounds like, Alan. I mean, I'm just asking.
It would be somewhere...
Because enforcement is where the problem is. Supervisor Miller is absolutely correct. It's fraught with pitfalls that are going to bring us lawsuits that are going to be tremendously painful to all of us, and especially to your department. So, I'd expect you to have some kind of answer.
It would be the same, in the same lines as what we currently have now for reasonable suspicion for drugs and alcohol. It would require more than one person's observance. And it's usually observance. I mean, it's you have to witness or smell the alcohol on a person. So, it's the same thing as...
So, we will go around smelling people?
Pretty much. You will have to have... You will have to have evidence of an odor, just like you do with alcohol.
Anybody want that job up here? Be around smelling people? I mean, I guess that's all about personal IT and stuff, huh? Good question, good answer, though. Okay, so we don't know how we're enforcing it, but we're going to create rules. You said that you've gone to the committee to talk to them. I'd like to ask, with the chair's indulgence, I'd like to ask Ms. Castillo to come to the microphone and describe that meeting. Can we do that, please?
Ms. Castillo.
And I thank Ms. Castillo for co-authoring an opinion that was published in the Star with me about this smoking ordinance. So, Maya, what happened when our human resources department discussed with your committee about insurance, about this smoking policy?
So, the most recent Hibwack meeting...
Which was when?
Which was, honestly, a couple of weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Very recently, sorry.
That's what it was brought to you, less than a month ago?
Absolutely. We were... First, there were some issues discussed about the cat bank. We did have some discussion, some input on that. Catastrophic leave bank for employees. Then, the health insurance trust fund was discussed, stated that it was healthy. The comparison was made...
So, there's not a crisis going on or anything in our trust fund right now? That's what you were told?
There's no positive health insurance trust.
So, there's no particular reason for increasing these costs at this particular time? Because the fund is healthy, right?
And it was also discussed how well our employees do in comparison, not only to stick to the insurer's book of business, but also in terms of, you know, national rates. So, how well we are, basically, how healthy we are. And then, Mr. Huckleberry's proposal was discussed. And I have to be completely honest, I did monopolize quite a bit of that conversation because I found it to be horrible. So, let's...
What, wait, Maya, please?
If there's no crisis in the trust fund and our employees are relatively healthy in terms of the book of business, then I don't see neither reason for the health insurance for, first of all, rating the plans separately, which will get you different numbers unless... Different numbers than if you rate the plans together. Second, if our employees are largely healthy, then these surcharges are also unreasonable. And not to mention, you know, going around smelling people. And, you know, largely, I think, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, because of who the national profile of smokers are, I think you put a lot of people at risk for... Because, you know, let's be honest, Pima County employees are getting rich. You know, your frontline employees are not, you know, making tons and tons of money. So, if their health insurance increases drastically, there are some people who will opt out. And because of the national profile of who smokers are, those could be people who actually really need care of some sort and will just not get it.
Let me ask, given the Affordable Care Act?
You know, I've met people who will opt out and take a penalty because they're not quite aware of what that really means to their pocketbooks.
Or they might choose to get insurance in the market that's offered by the SEIU.
Additionally, I have heard of a number of people as far as whether, you know, PPO or HDHP. Some employees have told me that they prefer the PPO because they can almost estimate what kind of cash on hand they'll need. And with the...
Why can't you do that with the HD, with the high deductible? It's the same thing.
If something, for example, someone says, someone knows that up to a certain amount, they're on the hook for, you know, a doctor's visit, where they may be charged $100 for their doctor's visit. Whereas the PPO, they know what their... What their...
Cost of...
Their cost is going to be. They know they're going to go in there and pay $20.
You know, with the HD, the high deductible plan, you know what your total out-of-pocket expense is for the year. So, you know. I mean, you can't say you don't know.
Right.
It's obvious.
But it's understandable.
Right, Chairman, I understand that. And actually, before I was on a different health insurance altogether, I did, I was an HDHP user, so I know exactly how it works and have talked to many employees about their switch and what's best for their family. But what I'm talking about is actual cash on hand.
Which is what we're trying to address with the HD, because
Right.
For those switching immediately, there's no cushion, and we get that. But I think that the other issue, you know, it seems to me we need to do some... Those who are on the PPO, we need to do a better job of educating them because if you're on the PPO, you have to go to a primary care doctor to get a referral. That's not the case with the high deductible plan. It is a much more flexible plan than the PPO. And that's just the way those things are structured.
Chairman, I completely understand. And I do think that there is a tremendous opportunity for education. And one of the things that I did bring up at the Hibwack meeting was actually the fact that in some departments, some employees aren't allowed to attend informational sessions. That's just how that particular department works. I've even heard of employees who aren't allowed to take their hour off to vote. So, health insurance, not that important. So, there's a lot of employees who just are not getting the access to those educational opportunities that they very desperately need.
Thank you.
If I could go on with my question, please. I understand what you're saying. So, you got notice of this a couple of weeks ago, even though Chuck's original memo about the smoking issue and his proposal came out in, wasn't it September of last year? Okay, so there was ample time for Alan to have put something together for this meeting, but it didn't happen for whatever reason. Okay, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Castillo. You know, the other thing we should take note of here as a board is that this is illegal in 29 different states. Three-fifths of the states in the United States of America have deemed this kind of proposal to be discriminatory and against the law. I realize that it's legal here in Arizona.
You're talking... Which are you talking about?
Pardon me?
What specific are you... You said...
The tobacco proposal.
The tobacco.
Right, right. That's where one of the problems is. You know, and we should take note of that. That's a big infringement on people's civil liberties and their rights to work and enjoy the same freedoms that everybody else does. And I understand that smoking is a deplorable thing. I agree with Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Supervisor Valdez, you're talking about the...
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm trying to point out.
You're not talking about the surcharge. You're talking about the prohibition on hiring employees, correct?
For right now, yes. Although, they're both...
No, are you talking about the prohibition on hiring? Are you also talking about the cessation program?
No, I'm talking about the prohibition.
Just the prohibition.
That's illegal in 29 different states.
That's what I...
And that's substantial for us to note and for recognizing that we'd be way out of touch with, I think, what is appropriate behavior for county government and for people who believe in some degree of fairness. That's really problematic. The surcharge itself is not necessarily legal in those same states, but it's just fraught with deficiencies that really are going to trigger a whole set of questioning amongst our supervisors about their ability to do their job and what kind of work environment we're going to have here at Pima County.
Sorry, Supervisor Valdez, I just want a clarification because I wanted to make very clear that it was just about the prohibition.
No, I understand that. I understand that, not fine Supervisor Valdez and Supervisor Bronson. I understand your questions. And like I said, I was starting to say, I understand smoking is a deplorable thing. And I'm all in favor of the cessation programs and being more aggressive with them because we have a high number of people here at the county who smoke, and they're a problem for us in terms of our costs. But it's not a problem, it's a crisis at this particular juncture. And it is something that we could address by being more aggressive in the cessation programs that we offer and dealing with those costs related to those cessation programs. So, the people have a really good, fair chance of quitting. Certainly, that's what the American Lung Association thinks is the appropriate way to act. They don't support health insurance surcharges for tobacco users. That's not something that they think is effective. That's the American Lung Association. That's not exactly, again, the Virginia Tobacco Growers Association, I got to tell you. So, there's some changes there. And so, as long as we're doing that and working hard to help people learn how to quit in a positive way, rather than going down the road of being so punitive and frankly, not very positive about people and their lives and the way we address it, I think that we'd be making, doing ourselves a favor into the future because the numbers that Chuck quoted are right. I don't doubt them. I'm sure those costs are there. The question is, is what kind of place are we going to have? What kind of workplace are we going to have? A place where you don't get a chance if you're a smoker? Where even if you're a casual smoker, that's not even addicted, it might preclude you from being able to work in this place over any period of time? A place where your employer smells you all the time if they think that you're smoking? Or maybe you need to worry about how you might be seen in public by somebody if you decide to have a cigarette? Or maybe you're on a date with somebody and your ex-sister-in-law sees you. She might have an interest in reporting your smoking to your boss. And even Dr. Garcia is back there giggling at that one because it's a reality that we all kind of face. And public health, the work that Dr. Garcia does, is all based about education. And that's where we found success in slowing down people smoking and trying to get people to move in the right direction. Has it been a difficult struggle? Yes. I think we need to make that same kind of commitment as a country to other types of diseases that are similar in this vein. Because what are we going to do? Stop employing people who are overweight? I'll admit, I smoke. But I like potato chips, too. They're not particularly good for me. It does give me a little bit of a punch here and so... So, you know, potato chips, potato chips can be the enemy, too, is my point. And people who are overweight cost us a lot of money as well. People who have pre-existing conditions of all kinds. Or maybe people who have a drink every now and then. I mean, the point was made very well early on in the call to the audience when one of our employees told us, "We're now forced to act as insurance executives here in public." These decisions are made all the time by insurance companies behind the closed doors in the secrecy of boardrooms all across this country. And it's because they're real. And the problems are serious. And smoking is not good, as an example. But we have to make our decisions in public, and we have to think that to think about the consequences of what kind of work environment we're creating for the 6,000 people who work for us, for those who are represented by SEIU, for those who do their job every day for the public in the best manner possible. I think we should reject the tobacco proposal and the attendant charges in the insurance proposal. But I honestly think that we ought to go back and take a look at the insurance proposal and see how it can be tweaked so that it could be more effective for us without those tobacco surcharges being attached to it.
Well, perhaps we can just raise the rates $20 on everybody and then give our employees who don't smoke $25 discount. And Mr. Huckleberry, can you... And Mr. Huckleberry, can you, can you address the solvency of the insurance trust fund and future, where we're headed in the future in terms of benefit, medical benefit costs?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah, the trust fund, and I think what everybody, you know, maybe some remember, some don't. We loaned, general fund loaned to trust fund $10 million to basically kickstart the program. And what we had planned is a $3 million per year repayment beginning next year. And so the 7% increase and our actuariales are such that, you know, we can begin making that $3 million repayment with this, just only a 7% increase. So it means that our actuarial experience with regard to actual medical costs during the year have been fairly positive for us. And so we're healthy in the trust fund, but it assumes the loan, it assumes a repayment of $3 million a year over the next, say roughly three years.
And if we hadn't lent the $10 million, what condition would it be in?
Well, we'd be right on the margin. And, you know, the issue is you have to have a certain fund balance in order to take care of unforeseen expenses that occur in when you insure people because we pay those bills and then we actually at the end of the year determine from the insurance premiums we paid and the monies we collected from employees, do we generally balance that? And that's always the objective with having the least cost incurred as far as increases from year to year. With regard to the future, it's kind of trying to predict what the future of health and medical costs are going to be. Is it going to rise more rapidly than the CPI and is it going to rise, you know, as rapid as it did in, say, the past 10 years? If it does, then we're going to continue to see increases. If it stabilizes and if it's, you know, under the auspices that the whole Affordable Care Act is really designed to try and stabilize this very rapid medical cost escalation, then we're probably going to be fine. But I don't think anybody can forecast in the future, five years from now, tell us what our medical expenses are going to be. We have to do this one year at a time and that's typically, you know, why we have a board of trustees for the medical insurance trust fund. And, you know, those are just, you know, those are positive, what, the good outcomes that we've had, you know, based on we did make a decision and we made, the board made some tough decisions, you know, a number of years ago and over the years to put us in this position to be able even to afford a self-insurance trust fund. We're now to that point of where we're doing fine and, you know, our costs have stabilized and it's unlikely they're going to spiral out of control into the future, but I believe that it's prudent to repay the loan and to continue to build a fund balance. So at one point in time in the future, maybe three to five years from now, we won't even have to pay the cost of what call the excess claim insurance.
But the fact is, we have an aging employee base, do we not?
Yes, we do.
And what does that mean?
Well, that means that we all go to the doctor a lot more often than we used to when we were 20 and 30 years old. So, yeah, we have, you know, more and more of those claims.
Thank you. And Supervisor Valdez, you, we're next.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And, you know, I listened to the comments by both supervisors here to my right and they've either said or alluded to the issue with the prohibition and I completely agree with both of you on that point. But the other issue that I think that we need to be very cognizant of is that two-thirds of our employees are paying already a difference for the one-third that's smoked. And that's where the issue is for me to be honest. There's an issue of fairness in my mind in that regard because I completely agree with you on that point. I also, as amusing as it sounds, I agree with you to a great degree on the enforcement provisions, which is why I have an interesting idea on how to move forward with that issue. Because frankly, I don't want this smell of you Supervisor Liz.
You're not the only one.
So let me try, let me try this. I'm going to go ahead and on item number three, move that we approve option number three with the following provisions. First of all, I am pulling out all enforcement provisions of this particular policy till such a time as HIPAA reviews and comes out with recommendations, and that's at future time, for this board to adopt. So that there will be no enforcement provisions at the beginning of the program. It will be stripped on our system. And the enforcement provisions has to be developed by the HIPAA committee. Also, well, I'll do the other part of it later. That's my motion, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair Supervisor Melo.
Supervisor, I guess the contribution comes in later. Well, okay. The $500 that you recommended.
Correct.
That comes in announcement.
Okay, yeah, that would be it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Roll call. Madam Chair.
The question's been called.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I don't want to break the rules.
No, go ahead.
I was incorrect. I was handed a note that I was incorrect. It's actually the surcharge that's illegal in 29 states and the hiring ban is actually legal. So I made a mistake, I apologize.
Okay, let's address that. Is the, yeah Supervisor Carol, is the surcharge illegal? In 29 states?
Actually, the, under the ACA, the surcharge is legal in every state. The difference in the 21 states, 29 states, in 29 states, they have laws that prohibit any discrimination based on lifestyle choices. So smoking is a lifestyle choice. So in 29 states, it would be legal to discriminate against those people that smoke. But under the Affordable Care Act, the federal law allows you to charge a surcharge to smokers up to 50% of the total premium.
Thank you for the clarification Supervisor Carol.
Thank you for allowing me. That's my question.
Madam Chair, that was my question regarding the 29 states, the 60%. How do we know that Arizona is not going to count people in this or next session, produce a similar law that would remove the availability of a surcharge to employees making it illegal? Do you have any?
Any comments?
How many years has this been an issue and how long have those other states enacted their law? Any idea?
Chairman Bronson, I don't have any information exactly on that. When we were doing our research, the first cases that I could find going back to the early 80s in the courts on the East Coast, but I couldn't find any actually, to be honest with you, in the Ninth Circuit. But I know in the, in the East Coast, State of Florida's been doing this and had gone through the courts on it as far back as 85, 87.
And just to the motion on the floor, I understand where Supervisor, I understand Supervisor Valdez's reasoning. I guess what I would like to see happen, whether we call it a surcharge or, I would like to see somehow that all employees who do smoke register for some kind of cessation program. And I know that's not quite what's happening in your motion, but I would like to require them to at least try the cessation program. I don't know how we get there, but it seems to me that that's the least that.
I would find that to be acceptable, quite honestly, because I really think people should try and smoke, not to smoke, and myself included. And, and that's not what this issue is about for me, but it's about fairness and our civil liberties. But I'll tell you what, I would agree with that because Supervisor Valdez's motion of putting something in place with no enforcement behind it makes me feel very uncomfortable about what we're doing with rulemaking. In all candor, if, if I could make a suggestion, it would be to work with all our employees who do smoke to see that they attend some kind of cessation, cessation class to help
Attend and complete.
Over the course of the next year and complete it. And then if we take a look at it again next year, maybe then.